I'd like to call the regular Board of Education meeting to board on June 4th. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Kelly.
Ms. Lynn, present.
Here.
Ms. Apple.
Here.
Ms. Tamski.
Here.
Ms. Singh.
Delayed.
Ms. Wilk.
Present.
Ms. South.
Here.
Ms. Gadsden.
Present.
Wait.
Here.
First.
It's Matt.
Emergency access to the back of the LGI.
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment issue of particular individuals. The board is expected to return at 7:15 if not sooner.
Removed.
Second.
Is there comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Eight zero. We'll be right back. All right, I need a motion to add Addendum 14.04 for the instructional list to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried eight oh. So Addendum 14.04 was added to the agenda. Now we're going to take a vote on Addendum Item 14.04. I need a motion to approve Addendum Item 14.04 to be, which is the instructional personnel listed. So we have Alisa Carrara Soto for high school principal. We have Michael Keely for the director of technology. And we have Crystal Sesim for the JV Forrestal principal position. And then also on the Addendum item is to extend Dr. Superintendent Landell's contract from a period of July 1, 2018 through July 30, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Kristin, any comments or questions? I would just like to commend the staff and committees for their thorough job in the process that they followed in hiring the following administrators. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried eight zero. Congratulations. So is there anybody that would like to speak? Who wants to go first? Put it that way.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Keely. Now your current director of technology. Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you, to serving the district, to serving the community and meeting all of your technological needs, especially as you start your Chromebook program. So very excited to be here and nice to meet all of you.
All right. You're welcome.
So I just want to say, Mike is coming to us from the Coxaki Athens Central School District. He's the director of technology there. He's done just a wide variety of initiatives just in the few years that he's been there. We're really excited to have him. Currently, right now, me and the two people to my right are the director of technology. It'd be really good help and so we're really excited that Mike is joining us. His first day is going to be July 2nd and we really feel like he is going to take us to the next level with technology in the district. So thanks, Mike, for joining us.
Good evening. My name is Crystal and I just want to say that I am honored, humbled, and excited to be a part of the Beacon City School District community, but especially to be joining the family at JDF. Today, I had the opportunity to meet students and meet some staff members there and you feel the energy and you feel the excitement and just the welcoming family feel of the building when you walk in. So I look forward to speaking with you more, getting to know one another, and for opportunities to help carry and, you know, really, really work together in addressing the needs of students here and working towards success. So thank you and I'm very excited about joining the team. Thank you.
I was going to say that Crystal is currently the assistant, one of the assistant principals of Ithaca High School. Before that, she was a special education teacher at one of the middle schools in Ithaca. She is a leader in that both within the district and within the entire Ithaca community. We're really excited that she's joining us as well. We can't wait for her to start. She is relocating, so her first day is going to be a little bit later, July 16th. And, but anyway, we're very excited to have Crystal come on board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alisa Soto and I just feel incredibly fortunate to join the Beacon family. I look forward to developing relationships with not only you, but our students, faculty, support staff, and just the entire community. Again, I feel incredibly proud to call myself your next high school principal and thank you for that opportunity.
Alisa is currently the assistant, one of the assistant principals of Memorial Woodbury High School. I think one of the things I'll say about her is when we did the survey, we did surveys for both the Forrestal community and the high school community. And for the high school community, we had about 250 responses, students, parents, teachers. Probably one of the most consistent answers, it was very open in the survey, one of the most consistent answers in the survey was wanting a principal who's student-centered and a good communicator. And, you know, just looking at Alisa's career before being assistant principal, she was guidance counselor before that, she was a Spanish teacher both in the New York City and in Washingtonville. With all those things, we think we found ourselves a very student-centered high school principal, so we're very excited to have her joining us. Her first day will be July 9th, so everyone's starting on a slightly different day and we're excited about that. And they have, both, Crystal and Alisa have letters to their specific school communities that will go out later tonight via a school messenger and we are very excited to get started. Just a couple notes about the process since that always comes up. We did, I mentioned we did a survey of all school stakeholders and we got a lot of great input from both schools on that. We had interview committees that had representative stakeholders from every group within a building at the high school, including a student member of the committee. Noah, thank you for being a part of that committee. That was, I think, a really good experience for us to have a student. And so we worked hard to have the hiring process be as thorough as possible. And with Alisa, I was able to do a site visit and hang out with her at her current placement for several hours and get to watch her in action. So with all that being said, we think we hit home runs with all three of our appointments tonight. We're very excited to have them onboard and welcome to Beacon for me too. I did so pay attention, I was going to take the rest of the night off and go to...
We actually have to add a workshop to the agenda as well, so we have Peter Head from, when we discussed the band trip.
And I just wanted to say to the board, this is something, a policy that doesn't require board action, it's just an informational for the board. I'll send you the proposal form after this meeting. It was my mistake, Peter always knew he was coming on this day. But I think it's important to note, before Peter begins, that we just had a very successful trip around about middle school eighth graders. I'm looking at one sleep deprived, sleep deprived principal over there because he went along with several of his staff and they took the eighth grade team to Washington, DC for three days and two nights and it was a very successful trip. And so to build on that, Peter has a trip ID he wants to share with you.
I can relate to the exhaustion. Have you recovered yet?
Yeah, I did go on that trip, but I've been on many, so.
One of the best things about it is taking an educational trip, so they're a big part of the music world, they have festivals, basically, they even have cruise ship festivals now. But it gives the kids a chance to have a memorable experience from their performing lives since they get to perform in a unique venue. The Disney one, I remember, I can tell you when I went to Disney High School, I still remember the trip, but you remember everything that we did about it, it was amazing. So I had an opportunity here since, you know, trips are a good part of what performing groups will do. I saw this opportunity come around and I had a friend who has done this exact trip. She lives down on Long Island and I was kind of toying with this idea, I was like, hey, can you send me your itinerary, you know, tell me all about it? And she said, here, this is great, it's basically a nice term key solution. It's a very seasoned travel company, she's used it a bunch of times, the Bright Spark Travel. So it's a nice, they've got all the elves and whistles covered, they used to be in the school districts, insurance and all that other legacies. I gave you a packet of all the stuff that you could possibly need to see. We're looking to go Martin Luther King Weekend January next year, so it's a nice, you know, weather down there is a lot nicer than it is up here at that time. The only issue we might run into is the weather thing, but they even have contingencies to handle weather travel and things like that. So the kids get to do a workshop, depending on which one we, I have to do an application, there's a fun little thing I have to fill out, once we're okay to go. We can either do a performance in the park, we can do workshops and they'll give us music, that's all just themed and then they work with us for a couple hours and the students get a lot of good feedback. A lot better than some of the other, we, you know, we go and you perform and you get a trophy, even if you're the only one in your class, which I've been to some of those trips. As fun as they are, this one would be a lot more valuable with the feedback we get from some of the clinicians that they'll have working with us. So if you have any questions about stuff, feel free to ask, I don't have too much time since I was in the dandings.
When would you plan on this? Do you have a date?
Oh yeah, it's January 18th through the 21st, so we leave on a Friday, so that'd be the only day of school week, unless it's Monday we have off, we'd be returning that day, so it would be a four day trip.
What are the standards for eligibility? Is it for everybody or do they have...
That's something I hopefully discuss with our new principals. There's some, you know, some guidelines I've had in the past was, you know, if they've had referrals or things like that, we don't want kids that are known troublemakers, that's generally not what I have in the band anyway. Usually the kids are pretty upstanding members of the community, well behaved, but if they've got a history of ill behavior, then they probably won't be eligible to go. But other than that, that would be the only thing I think that might prevent them from coming.
And you want to start fundraising for this?
As, that's why I'm here. It's about 1,400, I think, yeah, right now it's at 1,364. Some of those are variable depending on they have, they might go down, more likely go down than up because they kind of high vault the figure for airfare and, you know, coach transportation we need down there because we love instruments down there. So some of that is variable, but they're basing it on the full 50 people that I want to bring and then those, those vouchers.
Are we providing transportation to the airport?
That's to be determined. Right now, I'm hoping to fly out of Newburgh, which could be really easy if they can get us a flight out of Newburgh. I know there's one of those down at Disney on a daily basis, which should be really easy for us, so that could just be a school bus pick us up here and things there. Parents may even be able to transport it to Parkwood, so that's a logistic I have to iron out once we're going forward.
And how many other teachers would be going, chaperones?
I have, besides myself, there'd be additional four coming with.
Parent volunteers?
If I can't get staff to come along, then I'd open it up to parents.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
To piggyback off of that, I would like to ask Mr. Saltis to come up and kind of get the board a brief update of Washington, DC.
I think, you know, Brian just got the ante up, he's going to need to go somewhere farther now.
I'll start by saying that I ran out of data while I was down there and then my Twitter feed started to slow down as I was filling it up.
Don't build a dish, Brian.
My own one. So just to give you an idea, we took three buses out of here, about 6:20 we got it, we left here on Wednesday morning. And it was very interesting because our first stop was at the Maryland House, just to stop and rest up. Well, I think anywhere that has any type of souvenir became like a hot commodity because anytime we went, so we had kids buying souvenirs at the Maryland House and they were, look what I got for my parent, I'm like, that's great, we didn't get down to DC yet. It says DC on it, I'm like, all right, very good, that's, got that off the list. But when we got down there, we hit the ground running, we went to the Capitol Building, beautiful tour on the inside, the monuments they got to see. You know, the kids had a lot of time and a lot more time on their own, they were able to explore things and they were great about getting back to us when they were supposed to. We use the Remind app to stay linked with them. I actually had parents connecting with me on the Remind app because they had the code, but it was fine, they'd send me a message like, you know, do you know what time you're doing this at, respond to them. But the opportunity they had to walk around museums, the monuments, and explore things on their own or with a group of friends under our supervision, I think was important for them. We gave them freedom to walk around with their peers and none of them abused that freedom. I will say waking up in the mornings was a little bit challenging sometimes and very interesting. You may have heard a story, but they, it worked for all of them. They were outstanding the entire trip. We had no real issues that we had to deal with with students and I would say that their behavior was exemplary compared to some of the other groups that were around us and near us. So it's, it was a successful year one and I look forward to hopefully more years to come and, you know, we know the upcoming students are all aware of it now, so they can start to budget for it, but it was a great trip and a great experience for a lot of those students.
I just, I just wanted to jump in and just say a huge thanks to Mr. Saltis for taking this on. It was... We enjoyed watching all the pictures on social media, so thank you, I really appreciate your leadership on this.
No problem, thank you.
I might add that your school also has another trip, which is a band trip for, with Mark Rubenstein and his route going down to a competition and a fun time at the same time.
Yes.
That worked out well.
Yes, we got a lot going on. And the eighth graders that didn't go on the trip were able to go to Liberty Science Center on that Wednesday, which was a nice day for them to have an opportunity on the same day the kids that were going to DC, went to DC. So the other eighth graders did have an opportunity to get a, get a day in somewhere outside of the, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the 8:15. A particular individual on the board is expected to return at 8:15. Merritt, the second, by Kristen. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried eight oh. All right, thank you for your patience. I would like to ask everybody, please rise for a moment of silence for Ms. Joanne Boyle, who is a 36-year Beacon City School District employee. Thank you. All right, I'd like to review the agenda. First agenda item is 14.03, the one, the effective date was corrupted to 5/22/18. Another agenda item that needed correction was 14.04, the two, amended the date to 6/18/18. And agenda item 14.04, K1, there is an amendment to salary to $500 a day. Are there any other corrections to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to add a 13.02, discussion of the district map.
13.02. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Nobody. Nine zero. Are there any other corrections to the agenda? I need a motion to add Resolution Item 060418A to the agenda, I'm going to have Kenya read it.
So moved.
Be resolved that the board hereby denies the Beacon Teachers Association's grievance filed on April 5, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Nine zero. We just added it to the agenda, so we're going to have to vote on it now. When we do, after we do the consent agenda, Kelly, we want to add it at that time, so we'll do it after we do the consent agenda. All right. Any other items for the agenda? All right, are there any student or school presentations? Seeing none, we're going to go to parent groups.
Ms. Chip. Hi folks, Lori Margich for Beacon Arts and Education Foundation. I just wanted to come and remind you all that it's Calico Ball Week. The Calico Ball is this Wednesday, June 6th, at 10:00 AM, at Beacon High School. You're all invited. We made some invitations this year that we gave out to all of our third grade families as well as our donors. We always want to try to encourage our donors to come and see the ball for themselves. As we all know, it's a very moving experience. If it's maybe your first time, we're so excited and somewhat anxious for you to enjoy it. Here, these are for you, pass them around.
Thank you.
So yeah, we made postcards this year because we wanted to make it nice. We wrapped up our fundraiser, that happened predominantly over the month of May, and happy to say that we broke our record again this year. We were just inching over that goal every year and we raised about over $16,000 in the month of May alone. The bulk of that came from, obviously, from the community. Our biggest donation this year was from the We Play Community Project. I abstained from the vote, so it's a bit of a comfort to interest, but, you know, of course we collect from our PTOs, they all gave generously, the Beacon Teachers Association, and some larger sized donors this year, the Roundhouse Beacon was one, and am I forgetting any? So yeah, so I hope you'll join us Wednesday morning. There's parking and shuttle bus information there. I don't know what your VIP status is as far as parking, but as far as coming in the building, sit with us in the front row, that's where the VIP sit, and I hope you'll all join us. One thing I want to say too, since we, you know, our board is growing and we're raising more and more money, is that we would love to encourage all administrators and teachers to reach out to, you know, themselves and their staff to come to us with program ideas and ways for us to spend the money on the students, especially in the high school. We would really like to see more stuff happening in the high school. We've learned that scheduling is the biggest issue and if it comes from the inside to us, that makes more sense because the teachers are working it into their day-to-day and their programs and then we can help on that. So, thank you, see you Wednesday, I hope.
Thank you Lori. Always informative. Any, any other parent groups? Open to the public? All right, superintendent's report.
All right, thank you Lori for that update. I do indeed look forward to my first Calico Ball. I will, I will park in a VIP spot somewhere, no, I'm just kidding. I will park like everybody else, but I really look forward to seeing the, my very first one. And so just, I talked a lot at the beginning of the meeting, we just hired three great new administrators, we're very excited about that. The eighth grade DC trip was a huge success, so that's another thing we're celebrating. So I am going to give my superintendent's report time to Celia, she's going to give you guys a brief update on Naviance with the district, we wanted to get it in before this year was up. So she's just going to give, we'll go through some slides and give us an update on the program.
Thank you, Dr. Landell, and Mr. White, board members. Ms. Gadsden, this is for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So just to share a brief overview of information, so Naviance, you may recall, we talked about this long ago in the fall, actually in the spring of last year, in expectation and preparation that it would be part of this year's budget. And we've worked on the logistics through the fall. It's a web-based software system that's providing our students with assessment tools to enable them to learn about their strengths, their interests, areas of growth and development that helps inform the future, their future plans for both college and career beyond high school. So it is a database of information that spans, spans both college and career readiness. In one sense, students can search, they can look up colleges, they find profile information about those colleges, what types of degrees are necessary, the types of admission requirements, and general information about, about the school. In addition to that, there are also aspects of the software that allow students to explore both specific career fields and have an understanding of what's, what's required, the skillsets needed to gain employment in those, in those fields, as well as exploration of career clusters. And so those are two main forms of, of the system. It also serves as an electronic document portal that allows for college application materials, including teacher recommendation letters, to, to be requested, to be uploaded, and then ultimately connects into a student's college application credentials and requirements. And so we have begun to dabble in that through this year. As you recall, we talked about this year being phase one. And so I have to give much credit for the coordination that occurred with, with the technology department, district office staff, and the guidance department specifically, both here at the high school as well as, as the middle school. We had a Naviance consultant that came, that began working with our middle school and high school guidance counselors from December into January. That consultant came back and helped support a faculty orientation that took place in January. And our high school guidance counselors then, through ongoing technical assistance with, with our, with our Naviance consultant, were able to conduct student presentations on accessing student accounts during ELA classes as an introduction. All of our students at the high school have an account, it's linked with their district email account, and so they have the ability, and because it's web-based, it's not contingent on, they're accessing it, if they're here at school, they can certainly do that from home. What's, what's really exciting is that the company itself is getting ready to launch in next school year, a, a mobile app that's connected to the, to the program, so it may, it will make ease of accessing the, the system and information for our students even one step easier. So more to come with that. Next year is what we've referred to in the initial planning phase as our phase two. And so what you should expect to see is certainly continuation of our student sessions, specifically for our incoming ninth graders at orientation this summer, there will be both student and parent introduction sessions about that. Also at the advice and as we worked in planning out of the logistics with Naviance and in speaking with some, some of our, our neighboring districts who have, who have launched Naviance in the past, we made, we made a, an intentional decision to hold on activating parent accounts in this first year of implementation, so that one, our staff could get the full training they needed, our students could begin to get connected into how to access their account. Parent accounts however, will begin in September of next year. And so each, each, each student, their parent will be able to have an active account, which will allow them to be able to view their student's account activity. So it's a view only access, but they'll be able to also see, you know, the types of, you know, the survey results of their, of their students, searches that they may have seen, and set up, employability profiles, et cetera. So lots of information and we'll continue to build and expand as we, as we go. Student training sessions will continue, as I said, there's a mobile app that, that the company itself is, is launching and will be available to us as part of that. We are going to plan and again in coordination with, with Ms. Soto as our new high school principal, our guidance, our guidance team, as well as our guidance team at the middle school, but coordinating when we'll be offering out parent sessions, both at available information at back to school open houses, as well as some specifically scheduled sessions for both the fall of 2018 and the spring of 2019. The plan from hours from the beginning was to begin the, the system at high school The plan from hours from the beginning was to begin the system at high school, and that activation of our middle school accounts would launch for students into the 18, 19 school year. And so, again, we're anticipating and expecting that that will happen. At the middle school level, what you can expect is that students will begin to work on learning style inventories and some initial career assessment exploration. Also, in 18, 19, from the start of the year, our senior class will use Naviance as part of their college application process. And again, it's to us to be able to streamline for students, as well as their families, to be able to stay on top of what all of those tasks are that are necessary in the deadlines and timelines for that. What I'd like to do is just switch over and just share with you, just so you, to be able to see a little bit, this is a demo account, but just so you can get a sense, when a student logs in, they will see both, you know, the ability to navigate between their homepage, information about courses, colleges, careers, profiles. My planner allows them to establish goals that they want to set for themselves, to-do lists, and tasks that need to be completed. And again, this becomes a tool, a communication tool, one, just on an organizational end for the student, but also a way for them to engage in college and career planning with their school counselors, as well as with families at home. So that's exciting. What you'll also see in the student accounts, what it looks like, again, is they have the ability, as they're using the system, to go in. They can, you know, add to the list of colleges that they're considering. If they are in their senior year, you know, beginning to identify, these are the colleges I'm definitely applying to, courses that they're thinking about, that we won't enable that feature in its entirety at the start of this school year, but we will have an ability, as think of like Phase 3, to be able to link our high school course catalog into some Naviance planning tools for our students. Careers and clusters, again, based on the various types of assessment tools that students can use, they can save areas that they want to further explore, as well as download information about that. And again, they can go and create a planner that gives the tasks, the things that need to get done, and establishing deadlines around these. They're also able to get update news from Naviance itself, so if new information is added in, let's say about a college or a particular program or study that they've identified or a career, there's also a place in there where we can establish and a student can upload links to documents and resources to use. All right? And then, again, we will also, as we continue to advance our own skills of this across the high school and the middle school, we, school staff, so either from the counseling office or from various departments, be able to link in additional information. So kind of like a one-stop shop of where's there, you know, we can upload the information about scholarship opportunities, connections into, and right now it's fairly rudimentary, you know, links back to our district website, the Guidance High School Team's webpage, the main Beacon High School page. But again, as we get more skillful with this, at the school and at the district level, we'll be able to continue to refine and advance. I will put a plug in for Mr. Keely, our new director of technology. This is a system he's very, you know, software that he's familiar with. It was part of what he had shared with us in various parts of the interview process. So I'm looking forward, you know, in July, he'll be an integral part of, as we continue the rollout and the plan of this.
Got a question.
Yes.
Will this help with deadlines, if there's special tests or early admission or something to do with deadlines?
Yeah, so those deadlines, you know, we'll be able, again, for, you know, both us to be able to, for counselors to be able to share information reminders, but also for students as they note, like, and set up, these are the colleges I'm applying to, the tasks that need to be completed. I have to give, you know, acknowledgement to our whole guidance team, both here at the high school, as well as the middle school, and really coming together and working to learn and unpack the system and be able to put it to immediate use for some of our high school students this year. And much more to come. Yes.
So can this keep track of the colleges that they've been accepted to, as well as whichever college they ultimately go to, or do we have some other system for that?
We have the ability through here. We can add in terms of analytics, so that we can use this as a way to track, you know, ultimately, student outcomes, whether they go into the workforce, whether they go into college, and it will be a way for us to, you know, to gather that information and be able, once we're using it as the method of how we're, you know, identifying for what students' future plans are, then that will be a place that we can rely on. And again, with that, I'm gonna defer Mr. Keely, I think has a lot of information to share with us in terms of how he's used it in his other districts as well. That will be beneficial in supporting us, you know, launching it for that purpose.
Once a student graduates, though, they no longer have access to it, correct?
Correct. Yeah, because it's linked to their student account. But we have the ability to, you know, look over time. And this is fair, I mean, Naviance is pretty widespread and commonplace, both on the college level, as well as across districts.
Do you know if the data is stored here, or is it stored offsite on a Naviance system?
I don't know the answer to that. Off the top of my head, let me look into it and I can share that information with you.
Makes a difference in terms of, you know, privacy.
Absolutely. I mean, student privacy and the protection of student privacy is, you know, a fundamental priority for all of us, so, but I'll get you the answer on that.
Why don't we do our test spin on this?
As parents, you mean?
Yeah, or as board members.
Let me look into that. Maybe let's let Mr. Keely get on board, and, you know, after July.
When's the earliest that students can actually use this?
Well, high school students right now have accounts that are active and activated, and, you know, I don't know if our two student board members certainly can add in if you've had opportunity to explore a little bit. No one to meet you?
Yeah, the system, we had the presentation earlier in the year, and I know a lot of juniors have really taken into it right now, especially the career clusters. And I have all my colleges I'm going to this summer on Naviance, and all there is your colleges listed, and then right next to it is normal application deadline, early admissions deadline, and whether they require SAT and all this useful information all in one site. College board gets a little confusing, so Naviance definitely ties us together. But I think the more we push it, the more students will use it, because some students have forgotten about it, so just the more push for it would definitely be helpful.
Yeah. And our team, you know, our guidance team put a priority on supporting our junior and senior class, and this year, you know, again, to build the readiness so that our junior class this year had a skillset around using it and kind of navigating through it, so that they're, you know, ready for the fall with college application process.
Can freshmen also join in on this?
Yeah, so we have student accounts set for all of our high school students. And as they, as our guidance team was having, you know, the discussions about planning for next year forward there, I know there was discussion in their classes as well about the system, but their emphasis was on the juniors and seniors through the remainder of this school year. And then, again, as I said, we're going to begin the school year again with launching, you know, the, how do you use it, you know, how do you get into it, the features, and then the addition to that is adding our, activating our parent accounts and supporting our families through that.
Is this system up 24/7 year-round?
Yeah, it's a web-based system. So as long as there's an active student account, they have the ability to go in wherever and whenever, and as many times as they would like.
So they could go looking at colleges on summer vacation and check it out on Naviance?
Mm-hmm. They could do their research over the summer, for sure, and, you know, at whatever hours of the day or evening.
Okay, so now that I learned that my fellow board members have just as much interest in Naviance as I do, like, the questions that I'm gonna ask, I just want to thank you, Celia and Dr. Landau, for doing this. I just find that it's important that the students move up to what the neighboring districts are doing, and so this is definitely a step in the right direction, so although we're kind of slow, I think gradually we'll snowball into where everybody else is now. Most of my questions were answered, but I just want to be clear that those that are currently trained is guidance in the high school and guidance in middle school.
Middle school.
And the goal is eventually to have to go K through 12, or, because it's like the annual, you can, you can, you wanna guess?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, is the goal to go K through 12 eventually, or is it to stay middle school, high school?
I think if we can get some solid years of implementation, middle school, high school, that's what the initial thinking was on it, but certainly, so right now, there isn't a plan for it to be used K through 5, but that doesn't mean that, you know, a year from now, two years from now, we might not be ready to go in that direction. And again, as I said, with, you know, with our new leadership coming in, both, you know, school level, in the technology department, I think, you know, I'm gonna, we're gonna be part of all those summer planning discussions, and certainly we can, you know, adjust timelines as it seems like appropriate. But for right now, if we can get at least two solid years of using it consistently and across the board at middle school, high school, I think that would be a great accomplishment. And then we'll continue to expand.
So I see, which I appreciate, that the ninth graders coming in will get a presentation, so those parents will be afforded the opportunity to learn about Naviance, and then hopefully support their student in being consistent with it, because based on what I see here, there's no system set up that mandates the student to kind of check into the system, so it's pretty much driven by the student's own...
For right now, but that doesn't mean that that doesn't become, that this doesn't become a tool that's used, you know, like, in the classroom with teachers. And take, as I said, we're adding in a feature where students will be able to access learning style inventory, and then the ways that we use that or access that across classrooms and not just only in the guidance office, you know, again. But it's, at the advice of the Naviance consultants, and we thought long and hard about this, because is it, you know, you just kind of dive off the deep end into the pool, or do you kind of wade slowly in from the shallow end? But their advice was to allow our staff, our guidance team specifically, to really get a good working knowledge of it, get the training that they need, so that they can then more effectively support, as there's various questions across the board from everyone, students or families, that then they would have the ability to better support and help guide and answer those questions. So that's why we took it a little bit slower this time, in this year, but with a purposeful plan of how we keep scaling it up.
So there's no real way to assess usage right now across the ninth through 12th grade, right? Like, I don't want to implement, the system is supposed to support the administration so that it supports students, right? So if the students aren't going to utilize the program, then it's really ineffective. It gives the guidance counselors, you know, a means to give them the support that they need, however, if each student isn't taking advantage of that, what's a low number. The idea really is to increase their ability to engage with the system, so that it becomes as effective as possible. So there's no way to, is there a way?
There is a way. At the, in the district level accounts, there is a way to generate, these are part of the, like, the analytical reports in terms of how many, you know, how much usage is there. We can, you know, disaggregate that. We can, you know, over time, gather information in terms of what kinds of colleges our students are interested in, where they're applying, are they being accepted? So there's a lot of power in what information we can gather out of it.
I'm just trying to gauge usage.
Usage, yeah, well, that would be the base level.
I think the other stuff, if you get students, you know, to use the system, I think they'll see the benefits of it.
Yeah.
I think that's what Noah was trying to say.
Yeah.
And so if they're not using it, then we have to figure out ways to incorporate it. Since the ninth grader's getting in-service, I guess 10th, 11th, and 12th grade parents won't get it?
No, no, what we're gonna do is also have other sessions available. So what we've talked about is that when all parents come for back-to-school and open-house nights in September, that there will be sessions or informations that can be available, knowing that that's not gonna catch everyone, or that might not be the, you know, the evening when, you know, parents are able to really think deeply about it. What we've talked about is that we need to have other sessions that are, you know, again, conducive to opening up for all of our family schedules. You know, whether those are some sessions, you know, in the daytime hours for those families that work evening shifts, and then evening sessions for those families that may not be available during the day.
If they're able to, they're able to access it, they can access it from home, right?
Yes.
So if I could make one suggestion that you could take or leave, I would have students be the ones who train other students. Those sessions can be pretty dry, and it's not gonna work if a parent is mandating that they do this. And I think, working backwards, if you are able to demonstrate to ninth graders why you, this would have been useful to you, why this would have been helpful, how it's helpful, you know, how it's helped you organize, and I think it's much more powerful coming in a peer-to-peer method, and then they'll show their parents. I mean, I don't know that there's any parent that wouldn't be happy to have all that information organized and have their student taking charge of that. I think, I mean, obviously, you should do the sessions as well, but I just think it sounds like it's something that would be more likely to be adopted and less feeling of, like, finger-wagging if it comes from peers.
I have questions, kind of similar to what Kenya was asking. It sounds like this can be done, but if we set a goal and set up a metric to say, hey, we really want to have 80% of the students using this tool, and then we can chart against that, and really, we can, you know, the guidance counselors can use that to say, oh, we need to continue to communicate or to, you know, talk about the benefits of this, so then they can drive, write the numbers through their interaction with the students into using it, so it's kind of, they have a goal of what they need to do, and then we can see the use, because we know it's beneficial, and then it can drive kids to maybe ask other kids about, you know, it really kind of drives that whole process.
My fear is that students who are grade-driven will definitely take advantage of this. Students who are not, who really don't really care about the grades, may not take interest in it at all, but sometimes just getting on the computer and navigating through, like, this is my life kind of thing, and seeing it gives them the encouragement to kind of, you know, continue through, so I wanna, I know the guidance says they love it, you know, it makes it feel like easier, but...
Yeah, and there will be, there are lots of different ways that teachers with their students in a classroom can go in and use the features. And this is about, one, not just, the power of the tool is that it opens up and expands the horizons of students' thinking, and so for us, this is about how we're creating opportunities to connect in for all of our students, and there's lots of pathways to do that. So it, please, you know, know that it's not gonna be just relying on, you know, if the student is motivated or knows the tool, but in terms of all of the specific planning around that, I think those are, you know, some exciting conversations that we have ahead of us in July and August, you know, with, as we work as, with some new, as a new leadership team across departments and the schools.
Thank you, Celia. Thank you, guys, for being patient with me.
Thank you, Cecilia.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
All right, committee reports, including board comments. Mike?
Starting out with me, huh? Okay, so for the facilities and operations committee, we had a meeting on May 21st. Two main pieces to the meeting, first on the capital project side. Ryan Beck Architecture, who is our, obviously our architect, gave us a presentation on the design development, which is... Which is basically the design portion of the project plan and schedule. So they've been meeting with, you know, the school administrators, you know, principals and all the teachers to try to come up with the more detailed designs of the different spaces, looking at materials they want to use and propose, and so there've really been some interactions, there's been adjustments, like in the home career center, the materials and the layout, things like that that are going on. Our construction manager is also taking that information and developing the detailed estimate, which is important, because some things, you know, we found some savings in some areas, and some other items would be more expensive, so again, you really want to be able to, hopefully there's a balance so we can get all the work done. So again, you really want to be able to, hopefully there's a balance so we can get all the work done, um, within the, the approved budget, um, that we, uh, that we want. So that's gonna be, the estimate's gonna be done around, they said June eleventh, so that'll be good to see. Um, let me see here. One of the issues is the next step of the, of the, uh, plan is to develop the construction documents, which is gonna be due the end of July, and then they get submitted to state ed for review. So that's the piece where I know when they gave a presentation here, um, there's, you know, a, a, a window or a timeline that it typically takes to get these projects approved, and, you know, the state says they're gonna improve on that, make it more efficient, but there's nothing concrete right now that says they're actually gonna be able to do that. Um, and on the non-conservative end, where, you know, if it takes the longest that we've seen, it may challenge our ability to actually implement this summer of twenty nineteen. So the, the one option we asked them to look at is to, you can go on the express lane, and, um, and, um, it costs about twenty thousand dollars to go through a third party that's recognized by the state to do the review for us. So that would, you know, guarantee that the, the, it's all reviewed and approved well in advance, you know, for the next, uh, piece of the project, which is actually going out for bids and awarding bids and preparing for the twenty nineteen, uh, construction, which is only, that's a year away. So we, we asked the architect to feed, figure that into the estimate, uh, and to, you know, so we can talk about that at the next meeting. So one other, one of the things, we talked about some of the details, especially with the turf field. And, um, we set up a meeting, separate meeting with Anthony DiMato to go over some of the details, you know, striping, you know, styles, things that we saw when we did our walk downs, in order to come up with the final kind of plan of what we want and the details on the turf field. The second thing we talked about at the meeting was regarding the, um, Altaris report on the assessment for security. And so there's a number of, of near-term security items that are gonna be worked on, you know, probably this summer. Uh, and if you read through the report, and, and this is not safeguard stuff, but radios, we're looking at radios, signage to go in the summer, lo- locking of doors, there's some, um, maybe some near-term actions, maybe some longer-term replacements of, of mechanisms and things. Has some card access readers in various places, uh, some, um, let me see, some cameras, and looking at some, you know, some common, uh, public P A system changeouts. But, so there's gonna be some things we're gonna look to do in the near term, but then other things we're gonna look at, maybe needing an additional capital project. Things like, like if there, if there's, uh, if we want to go with, uh, you know, vestibule changes or other larger type of, uh, capital intensive things, we may look at that for the next twenty twenty-two capital plan, or, or what I suggested, that we're gonna put together as kind of a media security project that we would have as either, if we found that we need to do it, like, in twenty twenty, go out for specifically for a security-related, uh, project, or twenty twenty-two, or, but have, have one ready in hand of things that we want to do on a security basis, uh, you know, ready to implement, just in case, you know, maybe some funding opens up, and we will be ready, uh, to go with our list. So, so we're gonna be working on that, um, at the upcoming meetings.
We also, I just wanted to add, um, we will do the, the update that we did with the facilities committee, we'll do it with the whole board on the June eighteenth meeting.
Good, good, yeah, thank you, thank you for that. Um, our next meeting is on June thirteenth at seven P M, so. That's all I had.
Craig, thank you. Meredith?
Um, I attended the curriculum committee meeting last week, and, um, we started a discussion about what we want next year to look like. Um, talking to, kind of pulling out a little bit and talking to the, um, various departments more holistically and, and trying to figure out, um, some longer-term goals and, um, and how they all fit together. Also, we talked about student survey at high school, which I think would be great, um, and, yeah, that's, that's about it. Our next meeting is on, uh, June eighteenth, two thirty.
So, June eighteen?
Yeah.
Annie?
Noah? I apologize, I was looking that way, and I, you just gotta yell, Ted.
Uh, let's see, um, so me and Annie both went to the trivia night, I'm just today in Dakota, I think it was last week, um, and it was a really well event. The family was there, I got to spend a lot of time with the family, and it was a really nice way to raise money, and, uh, the P H S school and the community really came out for that. So that was really nice to see. I want to congratulate all the juniors and sophomores that got inducted into National Artists Society. That was last week, uh, I want to congratulate Annie, she is the new treasurer of the National Artists Society. And, uh, I know the society's already been working really hard on a lot of new fundraisers for next year, so hopefully we'll have updates for you on that very soon. Um, the spaghetti dinner is Thursday this week, uh, at J B Forestall for a family in Beacon that is going through some illnesses. So I'll be there, and I'm sure I'll see some of you guys there. Um, I want to congratulate Eastern Burgos, he made it to states for the four hundred meter hurdles. Let's see, as far as the new principal goes, I know I'm really looking forward to working with her. Uh, she seemed very nice, and a lot of students want that, one-on-one with the principal, knowing that she's a, like, person they'd like to, just not an administrator. Um, so that would be really cool, and also, regents weeks are coming up, so I just want to give all good luck to students who are taking this. Thank you.
What time is this spaghetti dinner?
Uh, I believe
Two sessions, oh.
Yeah, two, I think, uh, it's one to six to nine, I think the other, I think it starts at five, though.
It's like two sixes.
Yeah, two sixes, yeah.
Eight, five, and seven?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Five o'clock.
Um, I know Noah likes to be humble, but I'm gonna congratulate him too for, um, becoming secretary of N H S. Um, I also, like Noah said, I went to trivia, to the trivia night, and I had a great time. Hopefully, next time they have this, you guys can all come, create your own team.
Put pressure on the side.
Congrats to Noah's team for winning or coming close. Um, I wanted to congratulate, uh, Junie Agmuni, my sister, and from making it to states for High Jump. And, um, for the, um, new principal, I'm actually very excited for that. I had a conversation with her outside, she was really, uh, easy to talk to, and, um, I actually got to have conversations with her about, um, kind of my future goals and, uh, the colleges that I'm interested in. And I could see that she is one to know, um, she had an interest in me, so I'm glad to see that we are, um, expanding out and, um, um, in diversity, because she is a woman of color, which I am very happy about, um, because representation is very important. So, um, I'm glad to see what she will do this year.
You guys have any summer plans this year?
Um, I'll be here since I have a mind. Um, I'm actually attending Girls State, uh, in beginning of July, so I won't be here for a board meeting, but, um, that's kind of just a program at SUNY Rockport for, um, girls interested in, uh, government kind of functions and stuff like that, so I'll be gone for a week. And then I'm also doing a summer B O C's program, um, kind of concentrating on the Vietnam War and, um, just going into detail, so I'm very packed for the summer.
Excellent.
Noah? Um, I'm be, I'll be in the area a lot during the summer, we have a bunch of fundraising events over the summer. My big one's on August eighteenth, with the five K down at Long Dock again, so I'll be in Beacon a lot.
Awesome. I just said, no, I was remarking that I need to get in shape. But now I've got a deadline, Ted, I like it.
All right, Craig?
Thank you, um, I would add that on the facilities and operations security aspect, uh, the administration is reviewing what potential there may be of different funding sources. Um, and we'll await their report to see what we might be able to do from different sources, uh, before we consider other alternatives. So that's a very active topic, and, uh, I'm glad that we're doing our part on that. Of course, the security thing is a matter of not just what happens with the physical structure of the buildings, but a lot of operating protocols, communication, training, and so on. So, uh, that's moving along, and I'm pleased to see it. Um, I'm very happy to see this Naviance presentation, I keep hearing you talk about it, so I'm glad we finally see a good update on it, now I know what it is. Thank you. I know one, uh, high school student who we talked to tomorrow about, have you participated as yet? If not, when? Uh, I'm very happy with the appointments that we made tonight. There was a time when, uh, people were wondering, will anybody want to come and work at Beacon? Uh, those days are gone, we seem to have a large number of applicants and a good deal of interest in the district. Uh, I hope that this is not just a stepping stone to higher-paying jobs farther down south in the metro area. But, you know, you can't prevent people from moving up, and if they had a good time in Beacon and we had a good turnout and performance by them, I think we'll be happy, we might see a lot of, uh, other consequences from some of these appointments, because I believe they bring an energy and, and a good background. Including, uh, Mr. Keely, who I, I think it should be mentioned, did work as a teacher also earlier in his career. So he's no stranger to the classroom, and I believe that will pay off well, because that's basically who you wind up working with and helping is teachers using technology, and that's the means by which we convey it to the students. And I, I'm sure that, um, uh, Dr. Landau's, uh, former boss will be wondering about, uh, what's happening with people moving from Ithaca to Beacon, but that's okay, that happens too. And it, uh, I'm, I'm pleased with, with that appointment, and I'm pleased with the, uh, with, uh, the one for the high school, Mississauga. Um, I, I, I can tell you that when we met with them, I noticed that she can come up with about fifteen different facial expressions in the course of fifteen minutes, and facial expressions are a very powerful form of communication. We are interested in communication, and, uh, the non-verbal type has actually been found to be more powerful than the verbal type in many cases. So, um, I'll predict for you that she will quickly achieve a reputation as somebody who communicates with the face better than most people you've met. So I'm very pleased with what we're seeing so far, and, uh, looking forward to a very strong, uh, future with these appointments. And the Calico Ball, I expect to attend that, I've done it for a number of years, and it's a show well worth seeing if you can manage. Of course, it's during daytime hours, would not convenient for a lot of the working public, but, uh, I'm fortunate to be able to attend, looking forward.
Thank you. Kristen?
Uh, I'd just like, like to echo that, I'm very excited about our new administrators. Uh, I, I'm glad that they were able to meet with, um, staff that they would be working with, and I do think, uh, since Mr. Keely didn't necessarily have the opportunity to be met by the broader community, uh, I just would like to say that I, I didn't really have any expectations associated with that position. I didn't really know what it could look like, and, um, I knew we were going through a good process, I knew that, uh, we, there were priorities. I, I have to say, it was so refreshing that it was one of the appointments I was most excited about tonight because of the doors that, um, could be opened up as a result of the type of work he's done and the opportunities that he brings to students. I'd also think that, you know, not everyone had the opportunity to meet him or talk to him, but one of the things that I liked the most was he didn't just talk about, um, college-bound students, he talked about, um, developing skills that could help you gain employment, that could help you in using technology to develop the skills to, um, and he has implemented this where, um, life skills are improved, where, um, real, uh, credentials that could be used to open doors that might not otherwise be open to certain students. And to me, that was very exciting. So, um, beyond that, uh, the wellness policy is on the agenda tonight, so I don't want to say that if somebody has any desire to vote this down, what may or may not happen, but you may be, no, just I hope you read it, I hope you like it. And, um, I think it's, it's going to, uh, it provides a great framework for us to be able to focus on this important issue and have the means of measuring it and, uh, and making it a focus, um, because physical and emotional health and good nutrition and all of these things are, um, critical in order to being able to function well in school and the wider world. So, that's it, thank you.
All right, Georgia?
Okay, so just to piggyback off of that, on your agenda this evening, there are two first reads. One is for a policy on school volunteers, and the second one is for, yes, there is. Uh, the second one is the district wellness policy, so we are very excited to be bringing that forward. Uh, I know Kristen and I sitting here are very excited. Um, I also want to thank, um, you know, the appointment of the new administrators, I feel, uh, very confident in their abilities, and I am very excited about them being here in the district, um, and.
Thank you. Did you save your next wellness?
I don't have it, um, I never know. It's true, it is true, I live moment to moment, apparently. Uh, I don't, let me, let me look quickly, because I will, I will update you.
I didn't see it, I didn't see it.
And here's another policy.
Right.
Um, good evening, so I have a bunch of apologies, um, one is, I'm sorry I was late today, um, I had, um, there was a flooding situation I had to take care of at the ambulance corps. The, um, second is, um, I do apologize for missing the N H S ceremony. Um, I do appreciate the invitations, um, so, you know, please keep them coming, um, I couldn't make it to the work, so hopefully I'll make the next one. Um, also, I do appreciate the invitation to the Calico Ball after work, I'm sorry, can't take the day off. And I'm also, because of that, I'm gonna have to miss the awards ceremony, which is also that night at six-thirty. Um, usually I'm there to give out the, uh, the ambulance corps scholarship, and I won't be able to make it, so. Um, but even as a board member, I do, uh, appreciate going there as well, to see, um, to see basically how our kids are doing. Um, the, uh, and I did realize that, uh, the last time we met formally was May seventh, so I have a May ninth diversity committee report to give. So at the committee, we, um, uh, summarized, uh, the history of the committee, you know, how far we've gone so far with it. And, um, we also, uh, met, uh, Lisa Lucky, who's the intern, uh, for the summer, was gonna be working on the equity report card. And I did share with her the outline that we had, um, so far on that. And, um, I'm hoping that, um, she's making connections with the administrative staff to, to get the data, um, to start working on that. The, um, um, also, the, uh, what also came up with the risk committee was, um, something similar to what we did back in two thousand and seven with a parent university, um, but something more, um, something similar, but, uh, because if you ever only cause like every port that we're gonna do a community presentation. But, uh, to do something more organic, uh, it would be best to approach each of the P T Os, P T As, P T S Os, and maybe, um, co-sponsor a topic with each of those, uh, groups. So my homework assignment, and unfortunately, I missed South Avenue P T O elections tonight, I think it wa- today it was. Um, the, um, meet with the new officers and then discuss, uh, what topics they feel that they, uh, would help their parent, help other parents in those schools, and work towards getting speakers, uh, for that topic and, and pick a night. So that's, um, that's gonna be my, uh, summer assignment for that. Other than that, uh, there are no other diversity committees scheduled for the summer, we're taking a break, and, um, We're taking a break, and we'll resume in September.
So six to two.
Yeah, I'll have to delete it from the schedule. At the last meeting, we decided we were just going to take a break from the summer. That's all I got. Thank you.
Bill? Thank you. I attended the policy committee meeting. I've heard so much about the wellness policy. I figured I'd have to come and see it and listen to discussion about it. So thumbs up. A lot of good hard work went into that. I also attended the National Junior Honors Society Ceremony over at Romout. I always like going to things to honor academic achievement, and it's great to see the younger students getting honored and, you know, the shows we have coming up at the high school. You know, so it always looks good, hopefully they'll still achieve academically at the high school level as well. The next Dutchess County School Board Association meeting is this coming Thursday. It's at 6 o'clock at Arlington, which is a little earlier and a different location than usual. The presentation is going to be called Pathways to Graduation. It's being given by Cora Stempel, who's the Deputy Superintendent at Boshes. And for everybody on the board, since this will be my last meeting at Dutchess County School Association, think about who you want to... Which are the new board members you want to become the representatives?
Next year. I can't leave that task to a new one, though. Are you up for consulting?
Sure. My usual board rate. That's it for me.
Great.
So I'm sorry about that. I... We don't have a meeting scheduled, but I know that last year we talked about getting together over the summer, so we can get a jump on some of the initiatives that happened early in the school year, like Walk to School Day. So I will let you know when we organize that. But I also wanted to mention that we won a grant Karen had applied for. So it's about expand... She's focused on expanding farm-to-school programming to the middle school level, and we're sending it. It was a grant from the American Farmland Trust, and we're sending representatives to sheltered farms in Vermont as a part of their collaborative and senior institution NYS initiative, and it's to provide resources and networking opportunities as well as financial support for the implementation of an action plan. Karen has mentioned before in these meetings that Hudson Valley Seeds had a really big impact on the palate of a lot of the kids at the younger and younger grades. We've also heard that that experience of being in the garden impacts at the middle school level in terms of understanding how a plant... How a seed turns into a plant and just sort of basic biology, but what she would like to see is expanding it so that they continue to have exposure to good food choices and farm-to-school prepared meals. So it's exciting because we're going to be expanding our capacity to provide that. And it was really forward-thinking of her to pursue it. That's it.
Okay.
So I just want to get some of the... I've got my brain now. So again, I want to thank Suya and Dr. Landau for the Naviance update. It's important to me because it's important for the students. I just wanted to get a status on the grant outcome, if you guys received that, the one you did in February that was brain busting, like the four parts, if we have any of the million dollars.
There is no information, no first data, nor for the one that we applied a month after that. But we're waiting.
Okay. We're patiently waiting.
No news is good news.
I don't know if it's going to be...
We're not out of the running yet. Let's just say that.
I'm hopeful that we'll get a portion of the money, if not all of it. How about that? Just wanted to know the status of Grow Your Own. I don't need anything now, but I know that there should be like a report out of the students that participated, their success, and I just wanted to, if possible, have Grow Your Own somehow be filtered into a student presentation or like administrators inform the parents that this exists because a lot of times, again, students don't relay all this information to their parents, so they kind of left out. So I think that we can have programs that are flourishing with a lot more student involvement if you have a lot more parent awareness. The safety committee has not met, I think.
No, we're going to meet in a couple of weeks. We had to reschedule.
Is it going to be after I'm gone, Dr. Landau? Actually, like, safety, like, I'm sorry. So, all right, so that's fine. Public relations is not...
I mean, actually, the regs for safety committees, it can also just be a parent on the committee.
Oh, I love that. I can't wait to return. How about that? So I would love to stay on committee. Public relations is not...
Does that mean what parent could pick?
No, Anthony, you wrote it out.
I have to get back to you. That's her way.
Public relations hasn't been... Again, I think I expressed that Dr. Landau and the team have taken charge of making sure that information streams from the school, and that was one of the things that I found to be very important, is that information comes from the school. Our parents are searching for information, or they get misinformed, so I believe that the information is coming from the school. It is just a better, you know, mechanism to ensure that things are correct or to hold someone accountable if it is incorrect. So I'm thankful for that. So I just want to thank Mr. Soltish. I want to thank the band teacher. I want to thank all of the teachers and administrators that took part in enriching the lives of the students recently in these activities outside of the school district. I think that it is wonderful that we are now in a place where we're doing things that other districts do. I have great hopes for Beacon. I know that great things will come from this district because there are a lot of people that care about, you know, the students and the families that are here. The high school will be going on a senior trip. Anybody looking to donate some water or juice or chips, they will take it. I'm just seeing this for cursus. They will enjoy your chips and stuff as they slay the rides while they're there. Just wanted to know how the voter registration was going at the high school, if we even had like a idea.
I think we had about 40 kids registered to vote who weren't previously registered. I think, you know, with all the interest in the country on voting, I will redo the efforts for, you know, upcoming elections, not just the board election, but, you know, national elections.
Yeah. The other districts that I had looked into pretty much is part of their student government program, so the student government leadership actually ensures that every eligible student, you know, is registered if they so choose, but at least they're offered it in the school district. And I also checked with the BOE, and they were saying that they encourage this, you know, this movement. And I keep saying that if we... I'm going to support students for walkouts and other things, we should definitely equip them with the ability to vote on the issues that count really to their locks.
Agreed.
So that's if, can you...
Sure.
No, Anthony.
All right. I have no board comments for tonight. Unfinished business. So we have for 13.01, discussion of future workshops. This was a request from Anthony. So Anthony, you want to get started?
Yeah, sure. So throughout the year, we've... And I mentioned about follow-up, when was the sergeant's school lab planned? If Mr. Arsh could come back and tell us what worked, what didn't work? I'd be curious to know in terms of the community outreach. Also, there was some interest in the youth employment program to have Alyssa Green come in and talk about that program. And also Tina McKinney is also working on a teen training and deployment center herself. So I figured those two programs could be invited to come in for workshop. Also, the Lions Club has a Screen Eyes Early Program. It's not the same as the vision test that's given by the school. So I also thought that would be something else that we could have a presentation on from Barbara Gavin, who's the... Who's a Lions Club... I think she's the head of the C program for Dutchess County or something like that. So... But those were the suggestions that I had, that I posted. The... I guess the bigger, larger question is how do we ask for workshops? How... What process are we following to get workshops?
So for the lab plan, as I stated in email when you asked, we can have them at the June 18 board meeting, come and give a report on, you know, what the plan was and what was implemented and what they found successful or what they found not to work. So we can have that at the next board meeting. The other part is in regards to the workshops, and this is just my opinion, are they currently providing services to the district?
I think they want to. That's why...
Right, but I think that it's a... Who's that?
Alyssa Green, Tina McKinney.
They... I mean, I met with both of them. They... We said at the meeting with high school folks, they need access to our students, but they're not, you know, they're not providing services within the school. It's outside program. So we're assisting, helping them, you know, meet with kids and talk with kids.
Is that where the line is, though? I mean, that's...
Well, what I was going to say was, you know, I don't know if the board necessarily needs a workshop unless they're providing a service to the district. If there's something that you're interested in, I think that it would be appropriate to have the district administration look into that piece and see if they find that it's something that would be beneficial for a student because then they know the daily workings of the district and what the student needs, and so if it's something that, hey, it's a resource. But it's almost like if there's something that is a fee to it, then why are we only lobbying for certain aspects of people and so forth and not others? So I do worry about that piece as well.
I don't know if there's a fee, to be honest with you.
I don't know either.
So I... I mean, that's kind of why... When I was... When the summer youth employment program, some of the board members knew about that, saw, read about that, asked for that to be workshop, they said, well, there's also another program similar to that. So I was trying to be fair. But if the line is drawn to say, well, if they're not providing service within the school, then that's where the line is drawn.
Anthony, I was giving you my opinion.
Yeah.
I didn't say that it was a line drawn. I was giving you what my opinion was. So I didn't want it to be perceived because you said if a line was drawn... I wasn't drawing a line. I was just saying what my opinion was.
Well, I think in general, more in a broader sense, you know, there are community groups and members that really want to help our students, which is wonderful, and we don't necessarily have a good way for them to connect. And part of that has been just, you know, the stability of the district, but I think it would be good to understand, you know, the best way to funnel that into the district or, you know, yeah, get the students out. I don't... I mean, the... For us to know the details of every... Of all of the really incredible opportunities that exist for kids, I don't know if we need to go that granular on it, but it's great to collect the information and it's great to give it to the proper...
I think part of it, though, could be is like if we, as a board, felt like we... There's not, and this is something I give more information on, but if there's not a procedure for community groups to get involved as to developing a procedure for that.
Well, that's what I mean.
So then you can use the PR committee or something to, you know, kind of solidify and vet it, and then it comes to the board, and, you know, then the board can do that way, and then we can start advertising it, so.
I think I...
We should have a process set up. What was that?
We should have a process set up. We don't really have much of a process. We have some precedents and practices, but we've never really established a process for, you know, these groups who come knocking at the door or that somebody recommends to us, they should be able to have some kind of a hearing, but I can't see just like everybody, you know, into the pool type of thing. And there should be some, a little bit of vetting going on, I think, through the superintendent to see where it would go. Is it within the range? Would there be money involved in all the preliminary kind of questions?
Right. And I think they do that because we typically, you know, I know when I've received emails from various, you know, people that provide a service to school districts, you know, I say I'm receipt, and then I say it's been forwarded to... And there had been follow-through on that, but that's really the only thing if it comes our way, right? But sometimes we're asked verbally, hey, how can we get involved in the school? And it might be a nonprofit, or it might be someone that charges, and then it would be nice to say, hey, if you go on our website, there's a... Here's the process for it or something.
Yeah, but I thought the process... I thought the process was that all these things have to be approved by the superintendent. So isn't it if someone comes to you with like this stuff here, which I know of Tina McKinney, you say, well, that is not really my area. I don't want a workshop. I just say it should go to the superintendent, and the superintendent, their packet with all of the information, and then the superintendent reviews it, or the superintendent could sign it off to whoever is the expert in that area.
Correct, and that's what does happen. I think that it's only like when it comes to us, though, that we're pointing them that way. I think what the board was just saying through the conversation was if there was a procedure that we could say, hey, go to here, so there's a systematic approach to every single one. So then everybody knows it's the same procedure being followed. I don't know if that's...
Well, if you ask me, are you asking for these workshops because you feel like... You feel like they're great and you want people to know about them? Or are you... Is it more for your own edification or...
Well, I'm not looking for any self-whatever, but I thought it was... I thought since it involves our kids that, you know, there is a certain awareness that we should have that these community groups help our kids that would benefit board in how we navigate through our public interface. I mean, I will say, so the third example, the Lions C program does provide a service for the school. It's not a fee, and they did ask me if, how do you get a workshop? So I didn't know what to answer, so that's kind of why I'm asking here.
So I think part of it is to say that that would be vetted through the district administration and then appoint them to the administrative piece.
So you would need to write something and put that on the website that if you're interested in working with the school district, then you should forward your whatever? Like, you know, would that increase the likelihood that more and more people are going to send that packet in? Because we're trying to develop something right now, then that's what you have to do.
I think that would be better at a committee meeting instead of the board meeting, and then the committee could then bring it.
So here's another example.
...this opportunity to enter. I don't know how long it takes to get that meeting going.
Yeah.
I also... Can I... I'm sorry. I need to interrupt you. I think that especially just really as it relates to the type of programming you're talking about, it sounds like what we... This is something that we should make the high school principal, the new incoming high school principal, aware of because especially like a jobs program or... I mean, I do think this is... This sounds like a... It's not a district-level thing. It's not... It's a building-level thing. And so ideally, that information will funnel through, about those opportunities, will funnel through to the building leadership, and then they will bring them forward and communicate and find opportunities to communicate those to students. I think that I don't even know if we need a policy about it. I think it's something that does happen organically and without a lot of people thinking about it in other places.
Right. I think the question is what hap... You know, there is a history of opportunities being brought and opportunities being missed. And so, you know, we don't want that to happen, but I think what, as a board, what we're doing to put that into place is hiring, you know, the leadership we're hiring and things like that. So... But I agree, people come to me all the time with, you know, what sounds like a great idea, something they want to do, and there is some question of, you know, I think we know what to do. We take it to, you know, to central office, but then we don't necessarily know what happens to that. You know, we decided it's great, it's in place, it's in process, you know, kids are benefiting, or we decided this wasn't a good fit for us, or, you know, so I think that there... So then when you run into that community member, you can say, this happened, you know, it didn't go into a black hole. I think, you know, that is something that would be nice.
The other...
Go ahead.
No, and I... I mean, I do want us to build a stronger relationship with the community, and so that's the reason why I brought it up. The other example that I would have for workshops is similar with Mr. Haynes and his True Book Drummers. You know, we do bring in people from the outside to work with the kids and stuff, and the, you know, and I think we should continue to do those types of workshops. But I... When the ACE Mentoring, which had 10 high school students present at New... Soon in New Falls, and good feedback was received from the teacher, I mean, from the parents and the mentors, you know, I think, you know, and they, you know, they presented you know, how, and they, you know, they, they presented for a site that was in the city beacon, um, in terms of architecture and engineering, you know, they asked, you know, like, well, you know, who came to present to the board? I, I don't know who to give them to, you know? Um, okay.
I, I was gonna say that, I mean, you have to remember that the, you know, the, the mission of the board is to set policy for the district and, and also do oversight, so when it comes to operational things like choosing a particular, you know, group to do activities in the district, it's, it's better left up to administration to, I mean, you know, I mean, if we have a policy, for example, that says, "We, we encourage our students to look for, look for jobs, and, and we would like the schools to be involved in that," then that's our policy, and then it'll be up to the administration to see what kinda programs are out there in the community, and, and, you know. Because don't forget, even when they say there's no cost, there's a cost. There may not be monetary cost, but it's gonna cost time of our personnel to evaluate the situation, you know, the, the cost. Um, and a lot of times, they wanna, they wanna use buildings in the school, they wanna use, you know, they, they need, they need, need resources in the schools to work with them, so there's always a cost. And, you know, we all have limited resources, not just in terms of money, but in terms of time and personnel. And so, it's gonna be up to administration to determine, um, what, what's the best use of the resources? And first of all, there may be certain programs where we have in place that, uh, you know, so it'd be very easy when someone comes to us and says, "You know, can I, can I offer you the service?" And we say, "We already have it." Unless your service is better, um, there's no, there's no need, we already, the needs were recovered. Um, you know, there's a lot of things we don't know, uh, about being on the board, nor, nor should we as far as, as the operational side. And, and so, even though I won't be involved in any of the future workshops, you know, it's, to me, it just makes more sense that, um, you know, as long as we have the policies in place, we can certainly ask administration, "What are we doing regarding these, these policies? How, how do we have these programs in place?" And certainly, if we find out about something in the community, uh, somebody in the community wants to do some work with the district, pass it on to administration, um, for them to look at. And from an oversight perspective, also, after a program's been in place, say, "How is this program doing? You know, are we getting our money's worth if it's, it's costing money? Or even if it's not costing money, is, do we feel it's effective?" I mean, so I think those are all things that, you know, we can let the administration , um, evaluate, and then when it comes time to workshop, it's more after the program's in place, you know, if, if, if we have, you know, we wanna see how the workshop is progressing, how the program is, is progressing, that might make sense as a, as a workshop.
Just, uh, a couple of things. Um, you know, the, the, the board agenda is set ultimately by Anthony or, you know, this upcoming year, whoever's president or vice president, and so it is your meeting. Um, I'm not the one who controls, you know, information to the meeting, so I'm happy to kinda be the person who collects all this stuff. Um, but, uh, but there, you know, the meeting's ultimately yours. The second thing, 'cause I, you know, came from a very engaged community with lots of outside groups that were always sort of wanting access, and so the EFCA board, just, just to sort of manage time, um, would encourage like a group, uh, like, I mean, we have this system, like a group that wanted a few minutes just to share with the board what they're doing, they really strongly encourage that those groups do it during public comment. And so, I'm not saying you need to do this, but if we're workshopping every single group, we're looking at, you know, again, not that I mind, but we're looking at meetings that really could go for a really long time, or, you know, lots of agenda items on meetings. So, it's just something to think about. Groups can get their message across, and the time that's allotted, we can encourage people to come to that part, to share. Um, you know, it's, it's, it was used really well in my previous district, and there was a lot of, you know, foundations, community groups, et cetera, and they got all of their communication with the board done in public comment. And they, kinda what Anthony was going to, that the people that did workshops were in, you know, it was always usually internal, whether teachers, administrators, whoever, but it was internal people doing workshops, not outside people, typically. So, that's just my two cents on that.
Would, would the four-minute, would the four-minute, um, presentation, could they do slides?
It doesn't apply to student groups, right?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Yeah, and how do you become a student group? Because I keep myself appointed, so that's... Because that was my question a couple of years ago. How do you figure out who's a parent group? Who approves them? How, what's the process? Because anybody can get up there and say, "I'm a parent group," and then all of a sudden they present, so...
Well, I had a different question. I mean, you, you mentioned the, the public groups can come up to the mic and use, use the docked time for the public comment, but can they, can they use slides for that four minutes, or...
If that, that would be required, I would ask that they have it printed and then hand it to the board clerk, or have copies for everyone, and if they just have one copy that they give to the board clerk, she could disseminate it. All right?
Along the, along the lines of workshops, um, I would, I would like to see a workshop about how we are going to increase participation in things like, I'm just kinda throwing this out there, like sports. How, what, what, what are we doing to, to physically try to increase part, participation? Sports, music, right? And then, and clubs, and, you know, you know, because we, we appoint, we, we approve a lot of the mentors and the leaders of these clubs, but what are they doing to, you know, um, uh, in, increase the participation in the clubs that we're getting our money's worth? Or maybe we clo, cancel some and we start new club, you know, that kinda thing, so I don't know, that was a big kinda general topic.
John talked about that at the, in his budget presentation. He talked about his plan for, you know, increasing participation and interest in sports.
Right, he did, so at some point, it'd be good to see him come in and show. Especially planning for the, you know, summer and fall, time, time is now to start planning. Grab those kids and draw them in.
And I think that we had addressed it with the, one of the issues was the, um, age at which we start band, and then it turns into banding course, and then it turns into a scheduling situation, and I, I think we just, we talked about those being barriers that we were looking at, right? And, um, I know that, I, yeah, I have talked a lot about the, the, um, clubs and sort of figuring out which ones are, um, I don't know that we have any, their data, you know.
But I think it might be something to just, um, you know, send those concerns to new leadership of the high school, and, you know, and also at the middle school. I mean, I, I don't want it to be the first thing that she has to deal with, but...
Right, but I agree, but then maybe if, when you have the buildings come and do a presentation, if there, if she knows that that's something that the board is interested in knowing, and that's something that she could present on as part of, like, you know, some of the highlights of what's going on in the building. I mean, that's something that can be done, too.
A few thoughts. I like what, uh, Dr. Landau suggests here about the open-to-the-public session being kind of maybe first base, you, that's where you start, and that people can be encouraged to give their four minutes of fame, and then we know that our maximum exposure to that is, is four minutes. And then, if we like what we hear and wish to go further, we might issue an invitation to do an external presentation workshop if they've got something that's really interesting to us and that would merit more than the four minutes, and maybe they wanted to bring in other resources like some videos or some other people who would, uh, play drums or whatever. Um, we've had some workshops, internal presentations that I felt went on for a rather long time, and they could have been done in less time. Um, those can drive meetings to quite a long, uh, evening and, and foreclose other people from doing workshops because, you know, we only have so many minutes we can spend on that, uh, unless we wanna go home at midnight, and then there's nobody left to see it. So, um, I think we're getting someplace with this discussion, and we, maybe we should exchange thoughts of what would be a good protocol. Uh, I have another thought, which is, uh, intercalating in, in my mind. There are some cases where we have, uh, workshops that are just presentations, and we learn about something. There are others where we get into a more of an extended discussion, and we seem to be getting someplace. Sometimes those discussions take place elsewhere, like what we're doing right now under unfinished business. There's a kind of a hybrid that I'd like to suggest, and that is that, let's call it the enhanced workshop, where we plan it on a particular subject that is of some broad interest, maybe it's controversial, or maybe it's like we're wrestling with a policy decision that kinda goes beyond the, the committee level and has wings and legs to it. Um, and we, we want to talk with not only ourselves, each other, uh, and some of the internal players, but maybe some of the external players who have an interest in the subject matter at hand. And we would want to invite representatives of those groups to sit here. So, what, what we would do is set up chairs and complete the circle here, if you will, and bring in some other players who could sit down and talk with us in the whole circle. And, um, sometimes in parliamentary procedure, this can be called committee of the whole, and you get less formal, and you have more of an informal discussion where you're trying to, uh, learn, where you're trying to have an exchange of views, you're trying to kinda wrestle with a topic and figure out what the next step would be. It doesn't need to lead to a decision or anything formal or a vote, but it's a way of us figuring out how we wanna handle something. So, I, it's tough to think of some real examples, but for example, uh, we did have extended discussion about the school resource officer. We had some people come in, we had one side of the coin come in, the other side didn't get invited in for that meeting. We subsequently heard from them. Um, we could talk about some of the larger issues of curriculum direction. Uh, we don't really have as many discussions about curriculum as probably a board of education should, but you need to bring in, bring in the, the subject area experts if you're talking about a major area of curriculum development. Uh, school athletics, as Mr. Burkowski said, um, I mean, that could be a whole evening, uh, substantial enhanced workshop where you bring in people who have interest in that area and try to, to see where we need to go. Um, that's my thought. Um, and I just offer it as something that you might incubate in your minds as to what you would do if you had the opportunity to propose an enhanced roundtable workshop. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
So, part of it is, is that some of this is, could be worked out at a board workshop, like we kinda did last, uh, retreat, I'm sorry, retreat, a board retreat, which we kinda did last year, and then we could set up, uh, what we want for the procedures and the workshop piece. So, I think that would be a nice way to have something over summer, hopefully, you know, we can have that facilitator and so forth, and, and sketch it out there in the fall.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You're done.
Did, did that suffice for the discussion? Okay, so you added, um, and to generate was thirteen point O two, which was a district map.
Yeah, so in, uh, my comments months ago, I had asked about making district map public. Um, there's been requests to, I know the map is available at the district office in this big, huge panel, um, but it's not available online, or, um, and, um, I'm not exactly sure if, uh, that piece of paneling was updated or not. So, my question is, can we make it public?
What would be the purpose? Like, I don't know why the request is being passed.
People would like to know what, um, what school they belong to, you know, even if they don't, you know, they may be thinking of having kids or something like that. I'm not, you know, I, we do, I, um, I know we do get public requests, uh, um, you know, where is this map?
Are they not being allowed to come, like, are they not getting in touch with someone at district office to tell them the information?
Well, I mean, let's put it this way, um, I, I've not, I don't know the full details of, of whether or not they've fully used up all their options to try to get access to this map, but it shouldn't be that hard for anybody who li, who pays taxes to get access to that map.
In this day and age of electronic access, it's like, why not? Is it technically difficult, or I can't see any reason, any good reason why not?
My, my question is, how accurate is that map in terms of, of, uh, I mean, I don't wanna do it if it's going to lead people to have a certain assumption about what, where their kid's going to school, and if the kid isn't going to school, they start getting, you know, yelling at the district, because that's not what the map said.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is...
The question is, how accurate is the placement compared to the map?
I mean, we, we, uh, in the, you know, the transportation software, every address in our district is, is allocated to a school. That's what our registrar uses as well. Um, we, we actually don't use a map, you know, when somebody calls, we type it into that program, and it tells us where this, you know, where the, how, excuse me, where the address is assigned. So, it'll just take us some time to come up with a map. I mean, again, I'm talking about my old district tonight, but we have a map in EFCA that, for, for it to be sort of put on a PDF and for people to use, like, it, it wasn't super useful, and people would still have to call to find out, you know, if they exactly were in one place or the other. But it'll just take us some time to do it. We just, we don't, we, we use the software for, for, for our addresses, and we don't, like, if somebody calls, we don't go to the map and look and then tell them, we type it in. Um, so, we just would have to come up with an updated map and make it accessible, it just hasn't been done. I mean, I, you know, I, I moved here, too, and, you know, my wife would call the district to ask about houses we were looking at, and, you know, she was, I think, a spy, because her name's different than mine, and, you know, they would just tell her that's in blank, you know, like, I'm not saying, you know, I, that what we found for coming from a school with a map is people made mistakes with the map, and they thought they were buying a house in this thing, and so we would always say, "On the map, please call." You, you know, like, it's, if the map is not a cure-all, uh, but we will figure out a way to do the map, it's just gonna take a little while. We use, we use software to do it.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not totally in agreement that this is the best use of our resources at the time. I mean, I do think that if there's, it, is it because, like, I have seen some things posted recently about people saying they're moving and they wanna know about which schools, or they're buying a house in this spot, and which school would that be? But then, you know, I always respond, "Call the district office and find out if that's where, what school year's owned for."
Well, I mean, we talk about resources, and I, I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that's a bad idea, I mean, uh, you know, um, what I'm saying, though, is that if, if, if it would say resources, because they could just look at a map and know where they're going.
But it actually helps the district, because then they can have an idea of, "Oh, this might be someone new coming in," right? So, they could start projecting that piece as well.
I don't know if that's as far as that goes with a phone call.
Hi, Harold?
Well, I, I also wonder, you know, EFCA's growing a lot, and it's like, if, you know, if, if people are gonna be moving into one particular zone more than others, I think that there's been like shifts, like, Glendale used to be the biggest school, and now its population has gone down, Sargent has a larger population, and, you know, it's like, that, that's pretty fluid right now, and, and I think that if people are sort of committed to, "I want to be in this one place for this reason," then, and then it changes, you know, I, I don't know, like, I think that something about putting something like that out there, unless you know you're going to update it as regularly as possible, could just be misinformation.
What do you mean, update? I mean, the map is, you draw lines on the map, and that's the district.
No, no, not the district, but the, he's talking about the different, which, which school it is owned.
The elementary zones, you know, but those zones are lines, and there's no need to update it, is there? I think it's a big deal to change the lines.
I mean, we, we don't, we don't change lines. Uh, I mean, there are times, though, when we have to cap the class at a school, and we have to offer a different school, uh, as, you know, that's usually for people, when it does happen registering in like late August or whatever, so...
I, I think it's, it's very important, if you're gonna put something on the website, it's accurate, and like I said, that I know that map in the office has not been updated in a long time. I mean, it gets updated with streets and everything, but, but in terms of where the, whether the elementary school, district lines are, I mean, even though it does slightly change, and not in terms of the actual lines, but, you know, there's adjustments made all the time, and you really don't want somebody saying, "I bought my house thinking it was in this district," you know, "In this elementary school, and I'm now being told my kids go someplace else." It's better if they call and get the accurate information.
Can I ask, how much of a problem has this been? Are you getting any feedback that there's people feeling? And then, are you, are you hearing from like a lot of people, or just one or two people, or where did this idea term lead, just out of curiosity?
Say about my term, uh, from last year to this year, I think maybe five people asked me for it.
For the district map?
Yeah, and I sent them to the office, because the answer I got last time was, "It's in the office."
Okay.
So, I didn't know the office one was wrong. I sent them the wrong way.
It's, it's not wrong, it's just a normal map that doesn't represent, you know, every new house.
I mean, I mean, in terms of resources and addresses and stuff, I, I did, I did send a PDF around to the board on, 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 on the recreation of that map digitally through GIS, you know, doing this, uh, um, digitizing... you know, doing this, um, digitizing the street lines and stuff, where the map, where that old map shows where they are, on top of the new street layers. So, I mean, I can volunteer to do the work if it's, if it's too big of a resource-intensive issue for the school.
I mean, when you go to a Realtor, you have a general understanding of, like, what schools your home, you might be purchasing is in, and then you can just call the district and maybe kind of confirm that, but.
Yeah, I heard the Realtors are giving wrong information, actually, that's one complaint.
You can't buy a Realtor's.
Yeah, Realtors, yeah.
They need to.
I just, yeah, I, I think.
I've seen houses that I think are pretty accurate, where they're listed, but.
I think it might be. Go ahead.
I mean, it's just kind of, it's just public information. I'm just kind of confused why it's.
I think there's another issue, which is the one we've dealt with before on development issues in large projects. So what district of elementary school is going to be impacted by any given proposed project? I don't know. I would like to know, and I don't want to have to call up the District Office to find out. I'd like to look at a map and see it. And if the maps can't be made accurate, I'd like to know why not. Come on.
You don't know.
Doing the map would cost money.
You also don't know on a new project until people move into it and register with the district. So you can't tell really ahead of time?
Sure we can, because the proposed, the project is gonna be at a certain address.
But you don't know how many students will be.
I know where it's gonna be if we knew what the address is. I mean, I have a zone that's gonna be in.
Can I?
I could volunteer to make the map for free, and won't cost a district.
Anthony, there has to be some type of verification with it. I don't know, like, if you're doing it, you can, if you, if that's the case, I think that you can make it and say, this is Anthony Thangs' map of the district lines, and end it out like that.
I just feel like that's kind of going outside of your school as a board member. You know what I mean? It's like, I understand that, you know, they want to know, but at any time, like Dr. Landell said, like, if there's a cap in a classroom, you might have to go. There's students who receive special education services that are not in their home district because of the programs that are available to them.
Yeah, that's known. I don't think I'm, those are the questions I'm getting. I think I'm getting, what the question I'm getting is.
What are the specific questions? I, I just.
What school belongs to, what, what school, you know, what school belongs to the map?
But as, but as, well, I do think, though, like, as a, as a board member, that's, that isn't really our role to answer those questions. You direct them to the District Office, and they would call and do exactly what, what Dr. Landell and Henry said, which is they would type in the address on the.
I wasn't trying to answer them, I was just trying to enable them to get the answer, which is, which is what I sent them to the old map, which was not exactly.
But the map, I think what they're saying is that.
Send to a human.
The District Office.
And they could put it in the system.
So the electronic system knows the answer.
Instead of speaking to a person, then they utilize that information, so I think the best, they call, speak to a person to get the updated information. That probably is what I'm hearing.
Can we look at the, can we look at the transportation program and just ask the question, is there a way maybe that they can output, you know, hey, here's the current boundaries or something, might be a function.
We started, we started to look into that. I just don't, you know.
And what do other schools do? I mean, does nobody have a map, or do some have electronic maps? Like, if nobody's got a map, then.
Our district has a map at District Office, but it's all not updated, not new roads, but it gives you the boundary lines.
Right.
I mean, but it's not published on a website or disseminated. We have a, a good management system that when people call, we, we put in the address and it tells you, at least in the boundary map. We always recommended people calling if they were buying a house in my previous district, because they would look at the map, and if it was anywhere near a line, you know, we'd have people, I bought this house because I want to go to this school, you know, and then, like, so it ended up being a phone call anyway. But we, we've already started looking into what we can do in the transportation software, and if, you know.
George, your consent?
I, I don't know. We have a map.
Sure.
We have a registrar. We have a registrar that knows. I mean, I call them too, when I have students that move into the district and I need to know what their home school is.
All right, is the discussion over?
Yes.
All righty. Moving on to the consent agenda. The use of consent agenda makes the Board of Education make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any members of the Board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may second the case and the item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all Board members to be heard on any issue. Is there any item from the consent agenda that a board member would like to call?
Fourteen fourteen and fourteen fifteen.
Any other items?
Fourteen, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda made as fourteen point fourteen, fourteen point fifteen, fourteen point oh eight, fourteen point oh nine, fourteen point one zero, fourteen point one one, and fourteen point one three.
And one two. One two as well.
And one two. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So, Anthony, second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried, nine point, nine oh. I need a motion to approve fourteen point one four.
It's moved. Second.
Kristen, comments or questions?
Yes, I was just wondering what type of relationship there was between John J. Kelly Vision Consulting and Catherine McCormick. I mean, they're both doing the same type of service, and they use the exact same contract. The only difference really being the name change, so I thought that was kind of unusual, like, two different, two different contracts had the exact same contract. I'm assuming that they have some sort of relationship with each other?
They are, they are both teachers with a specialty for students that have disabilities.
Right.
So they're, they actually both work through BOSEs during the year, and we contract with BOSEs, but they do not do that in the summertime, so we have to contract with them. One is a visually impaired teacher, and I'm not as familiar with Catherine McCormick.
The same thing, visually impaired.
We have, I know for sure we have a student that, that needs ESY, extended school year program. I don't know the difference, I can find out.
It just seemed odd to have two different, you know, companies or a company and an individual that both were submitting the exact same contract, other than, you know, changing their names.
Right. They're, they are their regular teachers, so the teachers that they have, they have visually impaired teachers during their school year, so we need to have the ESY, we need to contract with them separately. So I don't know if they both work with one student or we have two different students that are insured. That would be the difference.
Oh, okay, so also, you have other questions, Bill?
No, I'm done, question.
Okay, so should they have insurance listed on their agreements? They don't list any insurance.
Um, that's a good question. I don't know the answer. I do know that every single one of these contracts was reviewed by our attorney before, and this is something similar that we've had before. So if it was a requirement, I think our attorney would have brought it forward.
Because some, well, as we go through them, some have insurance listed and some do not.
Each contract is a little bit more specific about.
I took it that these were two independent contractors. You said they work through BOSEs, which is different than the facilities at, like, Green Chimneys or, or Anderson Center. Those are actual sites.
These have contracts?
These two are not. No, they're for, they're ESY summer programs, those two.
So, if I can add, so these are individuals who are during the school year employed by BOSEs, but we are not able to contract with BOSEs to provide summer services. So they have, because they have a relationship with the student, been willing to continue to work with the student over the summer, but we have to contract with them independent, you know, as an independent for the summer months.
And Bill, the way that I took the two, because of, because I work as a contractor, so to me, that looked like, because they changed the font for themselves, but it looked like more their play contract, like, that they probably shared with one another and then customized.
Well, that's why I was asking what kind of relationship was between the two, you know, usually, usually when you have separate contracts, they're independent, may not know each other, but the fact that these two were offering the same service, giving us the same exact contract, I was just curious why, what kind of relationship there was between them? I mean, I haven't seen that before, so I was just a little hot.
So does this mean that they're working under our insurance? Because they're not working for BOSEs in the summer, right?
I don't know the answer to that. I do not.
So these were checked by attorneys prior to?
They, every contract went to our attorneys prior to them being on, yes.
Is the possible attorney made a mistake?
So, well, so my other question, you mentioned this was only for the summer, so that explains the July first through August thirty first. On one alpha, the evaluation says nine hundred fifty dollars flat fee for up to five hours. So even on five hours, it's a hundred ninety dollars per hour, yet all the, any additional hours is all at one seventy. It's kind of like, why, why is it we paying more? Usually a flat fee is usually, you get a discount for the first, and then, and then the, then the per hour basis is more expensive after that, so. And that's if they use all five hours.
I don't have the answer to that.
We are getting a discount if we go beyond five hours. So it's, it's the volume discount.
You're already, you're paying for the one ninety an hour for five hours, then you're paying one seventy an hour past that. It doesn't seem like it's really advantageous written up. Good for us. So then in item two, it says, do we pay with a credit card? Is it charging a credit card fee? Or do we pay with a check? Which, John Kelly?
No, John Kelly.
Uh, yeah, that's the one that we started with. It's four and a half percent credit card processing fee.
It's fifty.
If we use a credit card, so I'm wondering, do we, we don't typically.
We don't have a credit, school has a credit card.
That looks like an encouragement, because it's not in the Catherine McCormick.
That was the only real difference.
Oh, really? So, yeah, I mean, I don't know how to answer the question about those two questions. What was the first question, Mike? First question was insurance, and the second question was, you know, we have, the rate seems to be high for the, for the evaluation fee. It's more expensive per hour basis than on the additional hours.
We could bring these to approval on the January tenth board meeting. I just, we just don't have the answer. Was that? It's not gonna impact those as first students.
They start July first.
Yeah, so we'll change.
Do they need to know a certain amount of time ahead of time so they don't take any other contracts?
No.
I mean, we're just offering it as an option, we're just. The only thing I worry about being in the field is that I know that teacher with visually impaired is a hard service to find, and that delaying it, they may scalp up other students, and then, then we're gonna vote off not providing a mandated service that's on a student's IEP prior to the service being started, um, the time that the ESY starts. That's a chance that we take when we table it. And I always worry about impacting the students. I'm comfortable with the attorney saw it. I know the prices, I don't, they're actually comparable to what BOSEs, I bet you, provides during the year, as to the service or related service piece. So it's not like a astronomical amount, especially being that it's in the summer. And that's just in my experience.
Well, plus the, yeah, I mean, don't forget, the nine fifty is, you know, if they spend one hour, it's the one fifty.
That's for all evaluations, though. So evaluations are different than services.
It's a per evaluation.
Evaluations, right. So it's not, so evaluations are different than services, so.
Well, yeah, but for evaluations, nine fifty flat fee for all evaluations that require five hours or less. So that would be each, for each evaluation.
Right.
So if I have.
It's not atypical.
Well, but why?
There's evaluations that go up to six thousand dollars and so forth, Mike.
Would the student need a separate evaluation for the summer as opposed to the evaluation they already got for the school year?
Well, not everybody gets evaluated during this school year, and what's to recommend it?
And it would depend, it would depend on what their.
That's probably in there, unless they're asked to, so it's in the contract, if they're asked to do an evaluation for a student, like, an evaluation section, so it's a full, like, if they were asked over summer, hey, can you do evaluation? Yeah, this is what the rate would be, so it's agreed upon beforehand. Otherwise, the evaluation, it's either during an initial or during a reevaluation year, which is, you have time to kind of.
Would it be possible for us to vote on this tonight, under the proviso that they must then supply some sort of insurance certificate to the district that's satisfactory to administrations, to, you know, indemnifying the district from, you know, anything? I mean, I don't know, they've done this, if they've worked for us in this capacity in the past.
They have.
They have?
Yes, they have.
Yeah, and I see that they have the parent rights for data privacy.
But was that in the BOSEs or is?
They worked in the summer for us.
Okay.
So the contract is similar to what we voted on last year.
The second and third page are similar to what we include in our contracts to providers, correct?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
But it doesn't have a requirement for insurance up to a certain amount?
Yeah, that's the anomaly piece. I like those suggestions as to approving it, as long as there's proof of insurance piece.
And if there's not?
Then we'd have to, we'd have to look at elsewhere.
Okay. Okay.
But if they're licensed, I'm pretty sure we'll say that.
Yeah, so Kelly, so when we vote on this, it's gonna be voted on contingent as checking the insurance of the provider. Is everybody fine with that piece?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor of fourteen point one four?
So you want to amend the motion to say that? I mean, that's kind of the Robin's Rule supposedly.
I thought I, you guys heard me say that Kelly, that we're approving fourteen point oh four.
Yeah, so we made the motion, they want to accept that friendly amendment, or the second amendment, so then we can make that leave.
Say it again, Anthony.
When we need a motion to amend it, then we'll vote on the amended motion.
Are you motioning to amend it, Anthony?
Sure, I was offering the alternative, but I could make a motion that we amend, that we amend the motion to accept this item with the condition that they provide a liability insurance information.
Fourteen point one four is referring to this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried to amend item fourteen point one four, as stated previously before the amendment. Now we're back to Meredith, had the regular.
Wait, Jimmy, oh, what about? We have to do Catherine McCormick, right? Can you apply the same? Fourteen point one five.
I didn't.
We have to vote.
So discussion for fourteen fourteen included fourteen fifteen, so when Bill pulled fourteen fifteen, we can make the same second, or we could say, as amm, you know, as amended in fourteen fourteen.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
So we're still on fourteen fourteen. So Meredith made the motion, Krista made the second. Any other discussions since the item has been amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Now fourteen fifteen, I need a motion to accept fourteen point one five.
Motion to accept fourteen point one five on the condition they provide liability insurance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there comments or questions? Bill, do you have any further questions for fourteen point one five?
No, they were the same as the prior one.
All those in favor, as read by Anthony, with the amended? Amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. I need a motion for fourteen point oh eight.
Fourteen point oh eight, motion.
Second.
Mike, second, was Meredith? Comments or questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. This one also does not list insurance, as, like the other ones do, so that's a question.
So four point oh eight, four point oh nine, and four point ten are agreements with outside So four point oh eight, four point oh nine, and four point ten are agreements with, um, outside providers where we send students. So they are not doing work inside the district. They are just agreements that they ask the Board of Education to approve. So, um, for Anderson School, those are placements where some of our children go out of district. So they're not doing anything here in district. We're just, they have an agreement that they want the board to finalize and approve.
It's an added district placement.
Right.
So you said fourteen point oh eight?
Oh eight, oh nine, and ten are added district placements.
Like oh nine for Deveraux, there is insurance. It lists the insurance that they, Deveraux shall purchase. So they, they do list insurance in Deveraux. That's why when I was reading through them, I was like, oh, I didn't see insurance in, in Anderson listed. So that's one question. The second question is on item four. It says a district will be responsible for arranging transportation or reimburse the private school for the cost of transporting students.
We provide transportation to added districts.
We provide transportation. Um, but it made me think, it, what, do we know what the relative cost is, whether or not, if they were to provide the transportation? Because I know we ship kids to forty-nine different districts and locations.
But we also get the transportation aid on it, so if we provide the transportation, we get the aid on it. I don't know if we, we wouldn't be getting aid out of reimbursing.
So we get fully reimbursed for the, for this transportation?
All of our transportation is, is basically on the transportation.
Okay, all right, and, um, the, the, on the last page, it says that the appendix alpha talks about the cost and it looks like it's a per, is it a per pupil cost?
It's a, it's a tuition rate.
Okay, and it has a asterisk, rates are subject to change. There's no asterisk anywhere for it to relate to.
The State Education Department checks, does the tuition rate for private, um, for, for schools that we do added district placement. So it's not uncommon for us to have a tuition rate for one year and then the next year we receive a reconciliable tuition rate where we have to pay an additional amount. And it's all done by New York State Education Department based on theirs individually. So each rate is different, yes.
Changes yearly.
Is there any kind of a, a ceiling to this agreement?
As far as tuition rate?
What we're approving, what we're approving in this contract, so is there any ceiling that we're, so if it goes above that ceiling, it has to come back to us?
It wouldn't be a dollar amount, it would be number of students placed at, at, at a certain tuition rate, and that would be all CSE recommendations out to added district placement.
This doesn't talk about a limit of the number of placements?
There is no limit of placements. It depends what the student needs, and so the committee of special education would make the appropriate recommendation. So if added district placement is recommended because they can't service a child within the district.
Okay, um, all right, so the only question for insurance on this one, if you need it or not.
I think they're general programs that I think everybody's contract's just a little different. I mean, these are common added district placements that service students.
Right, well, like I said, Deveraux and some of the others also list insurance, so just want to make sure we're adequately protected in the district.
Does Deveraux provide in, in district services, not to us, but is that part of their program? Because that might be why they, if they send people to a district, the residential.
Yeah, Deveraux has residential, too. Do we have any residential? Uh, at, at Deveraux, we do have a couple of students.
And how about at Anderson?
At Anderson, we, I believe, we had two students there, and I believe we still have two students, but I'd have to check with Ms. Candello.
Does it?
So they go to school and or live there and they're.
So we want to do the same rule with the insurance?
I'm comfortable with the way, to be honest, they're a local school district that's, I know New York State certified and needs insurance to operate as a private school.
Right, that's what we make, that's what we make sure our contract, you know, protects us.
I'm not sure they, they'll provide insurance that indemnifies us personally, though. I think that might be something that they won't do.
They may not.
Yeah, I mean, I can understand if it's like, like I said, the other one, because those are like, you know, they're both like individuals as opposed to really well-established corporations. But the, I think the other ones that, you know, they're not going to do something that's beyond what they normally do, I don't think.
I mean, I'd say vote on it as is. I mean, you can make a motion to amend it.
This one, so it's going to affect on the fourth of June. Would, uh, if this was tabled, will it interrupt any of the services?
I don't know which one he's talking about.
Which one are you talking about?
Still on Anderson.
It could start, I mean, it, the placement of a student.
This makes us laugh a lot.
But then you're not providing a service to the student and you're going, you're.
So I'll make a motion to amend the, amend, I guess, this approval for Anderson, um, to be, it's contingent on verification with the attorneys that we don't need insurance listed or?
Again, I think Anne Marie stated that the attorneys reviewed all the contracts prior to them being placed on the board agenda. So you're asking them to verify their verification?
Well, then I would, I would like to know from them why it's okay not to have insurance listed in this agreement.
That's just something that we would vote on separately, and we could get that information, but it wouldn't affect this place, this item.
But if, if we should have insurance and we've already approved it, then, then.
We could get that information too, however, it's not something that's voted on for fourteen point oh eight. That's what I'm trying to say, because I'm trying to keep it clean, so we have accurate minutes and know what we're voting on.
And it, yeah, it seems like, you know, trusting that the attorneys have looked at this contract, what you want to understand is, is more just why is this contract okay as is, which doesn't necessarily have to do with approving the contract, it's more just understanding the process that the attorneys have gone through.
Well, I mean, if I, if I'm, I'm not clear on the insurance, if the contract is not, is not sufficient.
All right, so you, you made a motion to have the attorneys verify the contract doesn't need insurance.
Now I'm going to, I'll, I'll amend my amendment. Amend, make, motion to make an amendment to approve this, uh, contract with, um, and then with follow-up proof of insurance by Anderson.
With follow-up proof of insurance from Anderson?
Yes.
Is there a second for that?
I don't understand what I'm voting on, I'm so sorry. Um, I, I.
You can't just ask the attorneys, like.
Hold on, hold on, I want to, we could discuss that after. Is there a second for Mike's amendment?
Second.
I have a comment.
Okay, comments or questions?
But I, I don't know that we're, then you're saying, I know that this needs to have proof of insurance within the contract. But I think it, it sounds like the question is more, why is this contract okay without proof of insurance when others have it?
Well, right, if I knew, if I knew why it doesn't have insurance listed and there's a perfectly logical reason, then I'd be fine with approving it as is.
But your motion is saying, is assuming that they do need it, but I don't, it seems like we don't, we don't know that, right? I mean, basing on.
I wish I knew the answer.
Well.
Yeah, but you're saying that if it does, if it doesn't need it, you're saying it needs to have it to be approved.
Right, so I, that, that, I don't, I can't, I wouldn't vote for the motion you just, or the amendment you just made. Because it doesn't make sense to me with what.
Trying to figure out how to get it approved while you're preserving our protection.
I, I have a comment. I think that, um, I think that we're sort of looking, because when we get all of these together, then it seems that we're not evaluating them purely on just the merits of the contract, we're evaluating them against what other contracts have been, that's what seems to be happening. And using the information in one to measure what's available in another. Um, I, I think that we probably need, uh, an overview like just at some point of, you know, if we only approve these, uh, you know, periodically, it's helpful to have sort of a general understanding of what they are with these, why we're contracting to them, you know, just, just a brief overview. And then I, because I, what I'm going to say is I feel very comfortable that these are existing institutions that have been around for a very long time that are doing business with all of the different districts, um, that I have faith in our attorneys to, you know, review. I, I understand what you're saying, you see something and you don't want to let it slip through the cracks and that's, um, I appreciate that. I just, I think, I, I'm worrying that we're veering into a little bit of micromanagement and I think that, um, I, I think that we need to have the, our attorneys answer the question, why do these look so distinct from one another when they seem to be providing similar services? And if they could give us some insight into that, whether it's, you know, through a memo or some sort of update, that would be really helpful. Because they seem to be fine with it, so if they could just tell us why they're fine with it, that would make me more comfortable. And, um, but if, my concern is just that we're moving into, um, these are, these are high-need students if they're going to these programs. And I, I don't want to move into a territory where we're, um, moving away from some of these programs that they're dependent on or holding anything up.
I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting holding back services from students, I just want to make sure the contracts are correct and are, and are protecting the district.
Yeah, I agree, I understand.
It's hard for me to believe that any of these institutions will be operating more than twenty-five seconds if they didn't have very large, comprehensive insurance policies in force. It's possible they don't, but I have no reason to think that. They gotta have insurance.
So Kelly, can you read back the motions that Mike made?
The, the last motion. Yeah.
Mike's motion was to approve fourteen point oh eight with the verification, no.
No.
He didn't use the word verification. Mike, can you repeat it?
Wait, well, it was.
With proof of insurance from the agency.
Right.
All those in favor of amending fourteen point oh eight to have approval of insurance from the agency?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I think that was one eighty. So now we're back to the original motion of fourteen point oh eight to approve fourteen point oh eight. Mike, you, um, moved it, Meredith, you seconded it. All those in favor of fourteen point oh eight?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eight to one. All right, I need a motion for fourteen point oh nine.
Motion for fourteen point oh nine?
Mike, the second was Anthony. Comments or questions?
Uh, section four, compensation, it doesn't really lay out what the compensation is. Now, uh, is it, is similar where the rates and everything are set by the state?
The tuition rate.
So the wording here, which doesn't say here's how much it costs, that's, that's acceptable?
Because New York State Act gives it a tuition rate and we are not, we have to pay what the tuition rate is.
None negotiated, basically.
It's a, it's in, it's in the rate-setting department in New York State Act, and it's based on their financials and their financial information.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Who, who's the contract manager of these? I don't know, it's not Anthony, even though you signed it.
I'm not sure, you're right.
Who manages, administers the contract?
Don, Don Candello's, in charge of.
Which is not, is not listed on, not listed on your contract.
Because it's the district has to approve, so it can't be special in particular, but these are special act placements, but it has to be a district. So it's not like, you came to my office and I'm just going to sign off on a contract, because.
Okay, which are all the questions I had. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nine zero. Fourteen point one oh, I need a motion for fourteen point one oh.
Should've moved.
That was Craig, his second.
Second.
Meredith, comments or questions?
Uh, the agreement starts out with a agreement made this thirtieth day of March twenty eighteen. So I know that's, you know, that's.
In the term of agreement, it's a July one two thousand eighteen to June thirty two thousand nineteen, so it's just when they prepare their contract. If you go down to, uh, one, in term of agreement, it's for eighteen nineteen school year.
Okay, I saw that there, I just wasn't sure if the top had to tell it along with that. Again, what are the rates? Is it the same as?
It's a special, Green Chymies is a special act district, it's a public school, and it's, and it's subject to rate setting as well.
They're like government contractor, sort of like the, you know, the general accounting schedule. They, they go through a process of being verified.
Okay, that's all the questions I had.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nine zero. Any motion for fourteen one, one?
Motion.
Can you?
Second.
Anthony, second. Comments or questions?
Okay, um, it starts out, agreement made, blank, day of, blank, twenty eighteen, so should that be filled in? The date's right at the beginning of the agreement?
We could do that.
In terms of agreement, it does say that is July first two thousand eighteen and thirty two thousand nineteen.
He's talking about the very first paragraph, agreement made, the blank day.
Yeah, it's blanks.
The very first paragraph.
What, did they know when it gets voted on? Is that what it's, is it something that gets amended after?
When it's voted on.
When it's voted on, so it's not blank until it's approved.
Can you read the dates of, of the, the contract? It's E, E, M, S. Educational management services. You put, tell these dates.
So we'll put the, we're going to put the date in once, once it gets approved?
We need all the, all the contracts that came, we fill out, and we need to do that.
Okay, all right, so we'll do that with this contract too.
That's a question I, so, this contract seems pretty small, but I'm a little confused as to what it's offering. I know some of the things is pretty straightforward, but the, um.
Georgia, just explain this to me.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Georgia.
Fill in all the paperwork.
She said they, that they save you a lot of money.
He, I'm just familiar with him from another district and they do all those added district placements. You have to file what they call stack forms for the services that are being provided, and they check on the billing and make sure that the districts are receiving the money from the state that they are entitled to. So he does a great deal of work and can find a district money that makes sure money doesn't.
You happen to know what stack stands for, Mike? It's one of those abbreviations.
So I know it's a lot of paperwork.
School tuition, uh.
Or something.
Yeah.
You have to.
It's a system. It's an online system that the state has. You put in each kid that has a high cost and is above the threshold, you get, uh, reimbursed for it. So it depends on whatever the placement is, if it's sixty percent or eighty percent or a hundred percent.
Just, just detract and account for children's aid.
It's not, it's not. So you make sure like that you were, or in his office, make sure that the district is getting the utmost financial feedback that you can.
There's deadlines to me with stacking that you have to put in certain, and verifying and so forth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nine zero. Any motion for fourteen point one two?
Motion.
Second.
Mike, Anthony, all those in favor?
Well, hold on, wait, hold on.
Come on, man.
Go faster, go faster.
This is a nursing care service. Skilled nursing for a student.
Skilled nursing.
All right, so there's a blank space here where the contractor obtained professional services from the agency to be provided to the contractor and blank.
You can't put a student's name, patient.
So that, that's supposed to be, that's supposed to be blank?
Yes.
For privacy.
Okay.
Patient X.
Um, okay, item four is the term, so September to August, why?
Summer program.
September, no, it's September first all the way to August of the next.
School year.
Their current contract goes through the summer of this year.
Okay, but so we typically have it through, it's just difference, we typically have it through the year and through the summer.
That depends when the student needed the service, Mike. So it's not a typical situation.
It's fine, but the dates are correct because it's just, it's different. Okay, on item five, it says. Okay, on item five, it says, payment shall be made by the contractor to the agency within fifteen days of contractors' received invoice. Usually, we do a thirty day, so why, why is it okay to have a fifteen day payment?
No, there's no, there's no penalty if we take thirty days, so it's moot.
Well. That's, that's, why? Um, there's no penalty, I don't know, why, they write it in the first place, then. Payment shall be made by the contractor.
Person is why we're moving.
Our typical, our typical timeline's thirty days, is it? So if there's saying we want to be reimbursed in fifteen days, it might not fit our, our financial cycle, or we may wind up paying out money sooner than we typically pay it out.
We had any issues paying this in the past?
They'll be happy for our money.
Have we utilized change, the old, ultra-caring pass?
Yes, they have actually been, God said, for us when we have, when nursing shortage and we have students that need.
I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying that the term of.
I, I understand that.
Fifteen days is short compared to almost thirty days.
But we haven't had an issue where we've been longer than fifteen days, and we have not gotten, we haven't had an issue with the company. Normally, that is not fitting our payments, I think.
Right.
So that's what they're asking for, but we have not gotten any penalty or finance charges or anything like that.
So we should consider in the future, making sure that we have thirty days is what the typical timeline is, and they didn't, you know, they don't state, you know, penalty here, so that's good, but, um, let's see if I have any other questions. And that's all I had on that.
Do you not want to go home tonight?
Well, I'm not the one who put eight contracts on this one.
There's always a lot of contracts.
And I usually go through them.
No, I, I do appreciate Mike's comments, actually.
I just wish that they would have been asked before the meeting, so then we could have had answers.
Well, yes.
So, I understand that you went through them, and it would have been nice to have adds up, so we could have had the answers.
Usually I do, but this, this weekend it's not, so.
You used some extra days reviewing the agenda.
Well, it was on on Friday.
Yeah, well, you sometimes you do it Thursday.
Okay, so we got to, I'm done with questions on that one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried nine zero. I need a motion for fourteen point thirteen.
Motion for fourteen point thirteen.
Second.
Okay, this one says fourteen day, fourteen day, uh, to, to pay invoice, so. I'm just looking to see if it states a penalty, this one. I don't see one offhand.
Yeah, as a contractor, I mean.
You want your money as soon as you can.
Well, I, I have, I'm sure there's something in my contract that says when I would like to pay and.
Yeah, I mean, I'd want my, I want my money as soon as I have it too, but I also just get it when I get it.
These need to be accurate, and we should line them up, so they're accurate.
Well, but it's, the, we didn't write these contracts, they write the contracts.
Well, they're in the contract, we said, no, our term is thirty days, and it's not fourteen days.
And as long as there's no penalty, it's moot.
Well, it's not moot because they are, okay, I'm not gonna argue that.
Are any other discussion on that?
Nope. I think, my comment is moving forward, I do agree with Mike that we should, the agreement should be what we actually do, that's my comment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried nine zero. I need a motion. To adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, okay. I need a motion to approve resolution zero six zero four one eight A. That is the denim that we approved prior to the meeting. Can you read it, just so people are aware of what it is?
Being resolved that Wood hereby denies the Beacon Teachers Association rule that is filed on April fifth, twenty eighteen.
So Kenny, was the motion, is it, was your second?
Second.
Phil? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried nine zero. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried nine zero. Last thing.